Somebody's sitting right there, right? Mr. Winfrey's sitting there. And then somebody's sitting right here. Wait a minute, who's sitting? Mr. Winfrey, is that your jacket but you're sitting right there? No, no, I just want to make sure I don't put a package there. So, can you pass that around, please?
So is this my type?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If you pass it, it's the way that you pass it. Look, go get it, stay, go get it. I got one for you if you pass that case.
That's the, uh, I don't know where it's signed.
I do have something in the business.
No problem. These are walk-on, these are walk-on.
Special affairs, okay. We've got it, in case. Don't be scared of it.
Mr. Mays, these are walk-ons. Um, Inez, did you get a copy of these walk-ons?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, add on number one.
Reed, you got your stuff.
There's any actions.
Oh, that ain't walking, that ain't, they got me saying that straight.
Yeah.
Oh, my.
No. Oh, I thought we were gonna have some.
Ain't nothing for finance committee.
So we got two.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm definitely getting a couple emergency.
Also track you up.
Inez, you said you got a copy. So this is for Ms., Ms., um, Winfrey Carter and Ms., or is that what you're on about? No, but we need to, so yeah.
Well, you know what, we're not in a legislative yet.
Oh, there's Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Thank you.
The lady, Ms. Winfrey.
Yeah, yeah, fine. How about, uh?
I can't wait to go with the D's off. I don't know, hold on. Just get the time.
No. So, okay, so Reed got access.
All together.
Yeah, yeah, I gotta head to back.
These are, um, there's only one that's needed for Ms. Winfrey.
I'll take any address.
Oh, you'll take, I'll take, so these are, uh, these are the, and everybody did. You say, what? So I can have.
Uh, you rephrase that.
Oh, my God, I'm on one scuttle.
Oh, dude, okay.
Five, six, six.
Hey, how are you?
Hey, how are you doing? Say that. That is wonderful. If you let me know when you're ready. Thank you.
I am ready.
Paul ain't got a camera.
Paul ain't here.
Paul will be here later, he's on his way.
Ready.
So, we will bring this finance committee meeting to order. Madam clerk, roll call, please. Mr. Mays?
Present.
Ms. Fields?
Present.
Mr. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Mr. Winfrey?
Present.
Ms. Galloway?
Present.
Mr. Briggs?
Okay.
So, um, are there any changes and or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I received two resolutions. One of the living title, resolutions of Paul and Jack of our construction.
That's gonna be add-on number one.
And I wanna do that as add-on number one, coming in when we do resolutions. Then the other one is a resolution of sister contracting company. I would like to call that add-on number two and put both of them when we do resolutions. But I've got information that it need to be some discussion on in emergency order. And I wanna do that, I don't wanna wait until that is later because it's such, um, financially emergency. I'd better bring that on the read, um, prior to resolutions.
What ordinance is that?
It's gonna be there, it's gonna be there. Emergency ordinance is, that's what I'm gonna talk about.
I do have two emergency ordinances.
And they're finance related?
To me, they are.
Okay, my next question.
This is my request for finance.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Um, where do you want those ordinances at?
I want them right at the beginning for resolutions.
Um.
We think that this is a page, come down and it's gonna be five people. But I wanna get that done consistently, right? From now, we'll decide when we do.
Um, are there any other changes to the agenda? So I, what I would like to ask is that we can do Mr. Mays' request and the resolutions before special orders, but after public speaking. So, just so you guys.
I have to work this.
So, are there any?
Ms. Galloway, point of information, you referring to the emergency ordinance is not the add-on.
I'm, I'm saying resolutions and your emergency ordinance will come, your emergency ordinances will come right after public speaking. And, and that's, Mays, the public is not going to be able to speak on them unless you wanna do them before public speaking. Do you understand what I'm saying? They don't get to comment on them because they don't know what they are.
They'll get a chance at council meeting that public will speak, that you're talking about it now and they want to.
Thank you, Mr. Mays.
I'll stick with that order.
Mr. President, yes.
I guess we will talk about new business about leaving again.
Yes, yes, please. If we could, if we could do that, um, before the, before the order.
Are you trying to put that right?
Right before the special ordinances. Well, no, before the, yeah, just, if we could do it at the beginning, that would be great.
New business then will be before the emergency ordinances.
How long would that take?
Yeah, well, it shouldn't take long, yeah, so, so.
Well, that's new business.
Huh?
That's new business, and I just had the referral.
That's fine, okay. So, new business.
Move that new business up to the top.
Yes, that's what we're doing. And so, new business would include, um, what we talked about with the, just the brief overview under her schedule when she has a referral. And then we'll go into the emergency ordinances and then the resolutions which include add-on number one and two. And all of this will follow after public comments.
So my question about Mays, my question is, is any and all new business coming in that slot? For just those two boxes that I've heard?
If somebody else has something else, they can, they can share it now while we're discussing it.
Can we get, can we do new business after the resolution? Cause if it's turning the front, I'm trying to get our action done before we need it.
Well, and, and I just want, so we can report on it separately, you guys. It's, they're very brief things. If you want new business again later on, you'll have the option to do that.
Why don't you just say you're gonna get that report? And if she wanna make her referral, fine, but my thing is, what if I got some new business? There's two or three of anybody, it could cause a problem.
So, I'm gonna, so I'm asking that after public speaking, a short report about the audit meeting, Ms. Fields would like to do a resolution. Immediately followed would be resolutions with add-on number one and two. And then we will proceed with the business as printed.
And then you'll still have your decisions at the.
It'll be the same as printed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So is that a poll? It's staying. So, now we have public speaking, is there anyone that would like to address the? Oh, let me just say this, so, um, just, just so that you guys know, there is an add-on resolution. Just to, I'll mention those to you.
Point of order, sir.
What's your point of order?
We in public speech.
Right, but Mr. Mays, in all fair, fairness, the add-on resolutions are normally shared with them cause they have everything else that they can speak on.
We'll get to.
Mr. Mays, I am sharing, and normally that's what we do with this point of order.
We on public speech.
We are.
And if you continue, then I'm on, let's get with public speech. You can call out the board, let's do it.
Like I said, Mr. Mays, would you like to appeal my ruling?
I'm gonna see what you do next.
What's your, I, I am going to just read what the.
I'm gonna appeal that.
There's an appeal of the decision of the chair on the floor, is there a second? There is an appeal of the decision of the chair on the floor, is there a second? There's an appeal of the decision of the chair on the floor, is there a second?
I'm gonna let her get in the resolutions, then I'm gonna get in. The hell with what we vote on. We on public speaking, you wanna discuss a dark on resolution and they wanna sit here, y'all out of order.
He's out.
I'm, I, I know I'm right.
You know what, you are going to be removed cause you are out of order.
I'm not gonna be removed, not without this table turning over, you out of order.
Out of order, Mr. Mays.
It's y'all out of order for letting them do it. You want to when we vote, we in public speech. Who do you think you is?
Mr. Mays.
Who do you think you is? Then when he, but sit down, Ariel, what I'm gonna do is discuss it everything. So when you discuss it, I got some more discussions. Proceed since y'all wanna let her do it, sitting here and ain't gonna second the appeal. Proceed with what you doing. And I'm gonna speak a whole hour on it, cause it ain't even the agenda.
I'm gonna remove you from the.
You ain't gonna remove me, who gonna do it, you?
Well, I can call the police.
Okay, call them then, call, just call them. Now you out of order when you start pulling talk about.
Mr. Mays, you are removed from this meeting.
I am removed, you removed.
You're removed.
You out of order, that's what you come here and every week trying to remove something.
His appeal died for a lack, he is out of order.
I'm gonna appeal your ruling now. Who do you think you are?
You really, you really are out of order.
You way out of order.
Now, let's move on with this meeting.
Then call for public speaking, you not gonna get into no resolutions cause you think you are, no, you can't.
I'm not.
Appeal and I second yours. Who do you think you is?
Mr. Mays.
I appeal your ruling.
You, you lost your appeal, you're out.
I lost the appeal on you, now you trying to remove me, I'm appealing you. That's what it says.
I'm not, you lost your.
Well, that's what you say, you don't dictate.
I want you to stop talking.
I want you to quit pointing your finger and call for public speech.
You lost your option to appeal.
I'm appealing your ruling to remove me.
Is there anyone that would like to address this council?
It's the man. My name is Ariel Mitchell.
Are you recording?
And I live on the north side of town, one, one seventy-nine, I mean, yeah, one seventy-nine East London. You making me forget my address, miss. Anyway, we the people wanna speak on this, uh, this, this planning development. We gonna transfer the, the, uh, the block club grant to CDBG money to the Salvation Army for nobody can't take our money back for the state. And Ms. Galloway throw a monkey wrench in there and think, oh, oh, the people, people's a flit, don't know what we doing. That's what we the people wanna, on the, on the, one eight oh, one eight oh. Just resident one eighty, one eighty. Referring money Salvation Army, a referral as requested by city council, man, Mays, you planning development. We would like to know today, is the money been transferred before y'all taking back that? But Ms. Phil, try to, I like, we, peoples of color don't know how to run the city. And that's what I would like to put on record.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address this council?
Yeah.
Thank you. Can you say your name for the record, please?
Yeah, Arthur Woodson. Just for record, I'd like to know what it is that I supposed to be speaking about with the change order. And what she was getting ready to do was read the change order so that we would know what's on the change order. Because I would really appreciate, if you're gonna bring a change order, bring a change order so that I know what's in it and what, what it is. That's what she was getting ready to do so that we would be able to speak on it. We don't know what the ordinance is, we don't know what the two res, uh, add-ons are. So how do we supposed to even be able to comment even though y'all haven't told us what the change order is?
Amen.
It wasn't a, it wasn't a, what it was in the change order. I mean, uh, the add-on, that's it. So now, so that the people, the public would be able to speak on it. One nine zero four five three, workers' comp, is that Meadowbrook? Cause Meadowbrook follows, uh, McKenna Jackson everywhere she go. Highland Park, Road Commission, Mount here. How can you miss twenty thousand dollars, uh, uh, you owe? One nine zero four five three. How can you miss, the auditors missed, July first, two thousand eighteen to June thirty, two thousand nineteen, audit show, audit results showed that additional premium of nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars is now owed for, uh, for assess workers' compensation insurance. Then you have a budget amendment. The positions of the water distribution and sewer maintenance supervisor were inadvertently removed from their current fiscal year budget. So, when you pay this, uh, hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-one cent, where do you get the money?
Is there anyone else that would like to address this council? Is there anyone else that would like to address this council? Is there anyone else that would like to address this council? Any council person that would like to address this?
Yeah, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I don't care what Mr. Woodson say, and I know politics, Mr. Woodson. So without being argumentative, I know we in an election year. And I know, I think you was at my church, Shiloh, this past week. But whether you was or not, my position is this, no, Ms. Galloway was wrong. You can say she right, but you don't make our rules. She had an opportunity to do that in agenda change. She ain't gonna bring up no resolution in public speaking. If she, if you wanna know, I could have handed it to you, she could have handed it to you. Don't try to piggyback on some mess with somebody trying to throw me out of a meeting cause I support this person and you support that person. You were wrong and she were wrong, and I want everybody to know it. So don't come trying to say you know what's right and wrong, she were wrong. And then when I was, we say those who remain silent on an appeal is just as guilty as the wrongdoer. She were wrong and caused confusion. Let me say this, when it comes to, um, public speaking, Ariel, you really make a lot of sense to me. We in a lawsuit right now, black and white. But this council, you had three white council people, seem like they coincidentally missed everything. They missed the state of the city, they missed the investigative hearing, and I don't think it's unintentional. And it's been racial hostility and female hostility on this council. I filed internal complaints, then I read in the paper about a lawsuit in the middle of this election with white folks. I'm gonna talk black, white, Democrat, young and old, ain't gonna bite my tongue. So I'm addressing and responding to you. There's nothing wrong with telling the truth about racism in Flint and in America. It's here, it's alive as well. And Ms. Galloway, as far as what you keep hearing about gender, is here too. All those internal complaints is filed, family, from the hostility.
Thank you, Mr. Mays, your terms are.
Can I wrap up?
Please wrap up.
See, I know all the catchwords, wrap up. And so, when I talk about the racial divide on this council, the governing board, people don't wanna hear. It's not only racial throughout, it's racial within, and I will make sure people know the truth.
Ms. Phil?
I'd like to respond that, uh, I believe that, uh, councilman would give the public an opportunity to know what those two add-on resolutions were about before you began public speaking. So, um, I didn't really get an opportunity, but I wanted you to know that I supported you in that. You were absolutely one hundred percent correct to do that. And, uh, really, I don't know what the, uh, big deal is about this. It's just another reason for unnecessary chaos and, and melting off, so. Thank you, Mr. Woodson.
Mr. President.
Let me tell you. If we got rules, but we had voted on all of the changes and or additions, and I, and I don't wanna spend a whole lot of time on this, but we had voted on the changes and or additions, and additions. I do think it's good for the public to know what we're going to be talking about, and I understand why you wanted to do it. But this council had voted on the agenda, the changes in the agenda. And so, what Council Mays was saying, well, since we voted, when he called, uh, point of order, he was right. We voted on a, how we wanted this thing to be. I understand where you were going, and I, and I agree with that. But if we, if you hadn't given that to the council and we voted on it, then we're okay. But we had voted on a gen, an, an agenda and how that agenda is supposed to proceed. And so, he said, point of order, we supposed to be in public speaking. And you had called, uh, the councilman.
Yes, you did. You called anybody wanting to speak.
So, Ms. Phil, even though in, in her intent to make sure that the public could speak on this stuff, that's right. But, once we voted on it, it's done, we supposed to go by what we voted on.
Mr. Wood?
Uh, let me just read here from the rules, without making up excuses and whatnot, to vote or not to vote or whatnot. Says maintenance of order and debate, the public and city council are both subject to disorderly person persons coordinates, section thirty-one, base ten, and the general code of conduct. Additionally, the chair or presiding officer has a responsibility and duty to enforce these rules and sanctions for the purpose of maintenance of order. Only the chair or presiding officer may determine and rule on what, on who slash what is in or, in or out of order. Violations of this rule shall result in.
Now you get right, try coming in bully, right?
I don't know why we gonna call the rules, that's what these rules are for.
Point of information.
What is your point of information?
Do you realize that's only part of the rule, Mr. Briggs, we got more.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Are you done, Mr. Wood?
Yeah.
Anyone else that would like to address the public? So I would, um, I respect what Mr. Winfrey said, but usually, Mr., you'd like for them to be read.
Point of information.
What is your point of information?
Any council person can deal with add-ons, not just Mr. Garrett, wouldn't that be a fact?
Anyway, so, I respect what you're saying, Mr. President, but when he appealed my decision, you didn't second. And when he lost his appeal, that gave me the right to read for the public. And so, I'm just saying, if you agree with what he said, when he appealed my decision, you had an opportunity to second, and it wasn't. So since it died for a lack, it gave me the right to continue on. They trying to, um, do, normally, we don't have that discussion when we're making changes to the.
Point of information.
Mr. Mays, you had your chance, you are, you are using it to take my time. What is your point of information?
Isn't it a fact that we do that maybe in a public hearing? Maybe you confused.
No, it's not, it doesn't.
Yes, it is.
And so, but the other thing is, even after he lost, Mr. President, since you're, since you're saying what's in and out of order, even after he lost, he was angry because nobody seconded, and then he began to be disruptive. And nothing was said by my colleagues. And so, what do we do in a situation like that? Do you get angry because you lose your appeal and now you get to be disruptive? And not, nobody in the council was saying anything about that? And so, all I'm saying is, if we're going to say what's in and out of order, you might have said that I was out of order and, okay, I finally did. Well, you did, you said, but, Mr. President, it's okay. This is just what you said, my point is, he began to get angry and disruptive.
Exactly.
And there was nothing, see, and here we go, anyway, does anybody else have? Oh, and just so you know, um, Mr., um, Woodson, I did ask about that, um, change to the workers' compensation. And according to Ms. Lewis, um, there is, it's based on salaries. And so, it was an estimate at the beginning, and then when there was actually a confirmation of how much it was, that's where the additional nineteen thousand was recognized. So I just want you to know, I did ask that question.
Thank you.
So, we are on our next item, which is a brief discussion to this council about the audit. So, President Winfrey and I had the opportunity to meet with the audit, auditors, and they shared that they began last, some things that they are waiting to receive. There is one deadline date of, um, the thirty-first that they're hoping to get the information that they need. I know that there were some, um, questions about different scopes of the audit. As you know, there's gonna be the single audit for the grants that are under a certain dollar amount. Um, and so, anything outside of that, meaning, um, P. Carter, anything else, would be a special audit that would include additional dollars. And so, um, if you have any questions that you want to, um, direct to the auditors, um, in an effort to show, uh, an, a, a high, a respect for the auditors, um, it should go through President Winfrey or myself as finance chair. But I prefer that you send it to President Winfrey so that they're hearing from one person, but everybody has the opportunity, um, to ask any questions. And so, um, they're confident that they can get the, um, audit done, they're hoping by Christmas. There is some things that they need from, um, those in the finance department and the different areas that are being audited. Um, but they are working diligently with those departments.
Point of information.
Where's your point of?
You ain't technically really the finance chair, are you?
I am.
No, you're not.
Thank you, sir. Um, Ms. Phil?
In order to do an audit, we have to have closed the books from the previous year. Um, through you to Mr. Branch, have the books.
Point of order, point of order.
What's your point of order?
This was voted on for you to give a brief explanation, that's it.
Thank you, sir. So, um, Ms. Phil, you are now at your referral.
Well, I believe I am still allowed to ask questions, Madam Chair, even though Mr. Mays doesn't want these questions asked.
Point of order.
That's part of the responsibility of councilperson.
Does she appeal in your ruling or argue? Point of order, she sound like she argued in your ruling. Will you rule, move her and call her out order for arguing and not getting on with the referral?
Um, Ms. Phil, we didn't break down what that looked like, and so if we could just stick to what we said line by line, if you could just do your referral, and we'll talk about it under new business, how is that?
Okay, I'm looking back to new business.
I appreciate that.
So one referral is to Mr. Branch.
Stop talking, Mr. Mays, you are out of order.
Point of order.
What is your point of order?
Don't discriminate against the black, let me finish my point. You discriminating against the black councilman on the north side, but you won't check her and warn her because our rules say after one warning, you remove her. You tried to remove me, cause I'm black and you female, but when it come to white females, you got a different standard of policing. And that's my point of order.
Mr. Mays.
Will you, will you treat us the same? Will you treat us the same and quit discriminating?
Mr. Mays, I am, the difference is, when you were doing your point of order and you said something, Ms. Phil remained silent as you spoke. The difference is, once she said, I will do as you requested, and begin to speak on her referral, you continue to talk. And according to our rules, you are supposed to be silent while I respond.
Point of order. The, the, a point of order is you gonna rem, you gonna say I was right and move on. Not you gonna point and talk to me like a kid, you out of order now. Now, if you continue to talk to me like a kid, and you're supposed to say, proceed or deny. It ain't no sticking your thing and talk, Mr. Mays, that's about, not me. And if you can't handle the chair and you wanna get into these long diatribes, you out of order again. Now, treat them like you treat the black man. Quit trying to get the white folks vote to try to be president.
Stop talking, Mr. Mays.
Don't discriminate.
Stop talking, you are out of order for disrupting this meeting.
You were out of order for not handling it right.
I already did.
Well, continue handling right. I listen well and I observe well, you discriminatory.
Where's the disorderly conduct? Cause now you are disorderly. And so, well, you should stop talking.
You should check them folks.
Thank you, Ms. Phil, would you please, Mr. Mays, and I just want you to stop talking, otherwise you are going to have the last warning and that's it. So, Ms. Phil, if you will please do, Mr. Mays, that's your last warning.
Point of order.
You are, what's your point of order?
Have, have you warned her of hers?
I haven't needed to.
Yes, you did.
I didn't. I didn't need to. Go ahead, Ms. Phil.
I have a referral to Mr. Branch and finance, I'd like to know if the books. I have a second referral, I would like.
Point of order. We voted on our referral, that's what she said. She didn't say she had referrals. Point of order. Point of order.
What's your point of order?
She said she had a referral, she didn't say she had a list of referrals, I know her. She's made that referral, now she's going to a second. You gonna allow multiple referrals? That ain't what we voted on.
Um, so, so, yeah, I'm gonna let her do one more. Thank you, Ms. Phil.
Well, I actually have two more, and.
Oh, and I didn't tell, she didn't say I.
That's my point, so you, I repeal, I appeal the ruling of the chair.
There's no ruling on mine.
You said you were gonna let her proceed with these referrals, she said she had a referral, I gotta.
No, he appealed, so he appealed, I don't know what decision he's appealed, just so you guys know. Um, he's appealing the decision of the chair.
To let her do multiple referrals like we know she do.
So, um, is there a second? Yeah, I'll second, I'll second.
Amen.
It's been moved and seconded, that she would make one referral, she asked if she can make a referral. So, I don't know if that needs referrals or referrals, so, um, Mr. Mays and then Mr. Garrett.
Madam Chair, let me say this.
Yes, sir.
It might have passed if she had have said she had multiple referrals. But I went through an exercise, cause I know my colleagues. I knew when she wanted to move, move, new business, it was gonna probably be a bunch of stuff dealing with the administration that she liked to do and then leave. I said, keep it at the end. Now, you said, I had a referral, now we get here, she telling you it's multiple. I don't even wanna him yet. She can sit here just like any other council person, wait till we get to that part of the agenda and make multiple referrals to the cows come home. I know these people. You try to act like you don't know them and that they all in order and so forth and so on. So I'll be voting no on your ruling and let her proceed. If you mean well, you'll vote no too, cause she misled you, misled us. We voted on one referral, I made an appointment, keep all that to. I made an appointment, keep all that to new business, and I asked specifically, "A referral?" That's what it was. It wasn't multiple referrals, 'cause if, if that's the case, it wouldn't, I wouldn't even vote it for. Now, she done sprung on you as more than one, and we should vote this down. She can stay in attendance, just like we all do. And then, when we get to that agenda, referral after referral, she done made the one referral. That's what we voted on, thought it was something quick. She telling you it ain't just another one, it's some more. I'll be, she wanna do that at the first meeting and leave. Just do all up step and leave. Let her make her sit here.
Mr. Bear?
Yeah, just in regards to knowing how Ms. Fields does referrals, I know typically when she does it, she just kinda goes down a list, so that's what I assume when we have to approve her referral. I mean, uh, that's just the way she does it, and it's not, you're causing discussions, it's a separate referral to the department and not leaving more than.
Point of information. Point of information.
Oh, what's your point of order?
Did you hear her on the record say, "A referral?"
I wasn't listening.
Okay.
To be clear, I just, I just heard, I know the referral, and I hear her say referral, I know she does multiple at a time, just by reading.
You know that.
So, that's all I got to say.
So, Ms. Fields, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Fields.
The referrals I would like to make would have been done and over with, and we'd be moving on to other business, but.
Mr. Mays, please. You're being disruptive.
Is doing his darndest to keep even speaking at all, with only points of order, only points of information, uh, you know, objecting to everything under the sun, just outright interrupting me, ignoring the chair, ignoring all of our council rules. Uh, I just wanna point out that this all would be over with if I had just been allowed to make time referrals.
Is there any further discussion on the, um, decision? And just for the record, you guys, um, the chair, I, I can't say if she said referrals or referral, and so, it's not my, right, it's not my, and so, um, so him appealing the chair, I, I thought that referrals meant referral, so, just so you know, it wasn't my decision, so he's not technically, um, appealing me, he's, he's appealing what we all think we heard, so just.
We heard multiple. Just speak for what you heard.
It's not my ruling, is what I'm saying. So, thank you, Mr. Mays. You're done, Mr. Mays, I heard.
I'm just giving point of information.
All in favor of the chair's ruling, say aye. Those that oppose.
Aye.
Yes, Phils, Ms. Fields, continue with your referral, please. What's your point of order?
A share of names. I wanna see.
All in favor of the chair's ruling, say aye. Those that oppose. Thank you. So, Ms. Fields, if you could please continue, and then we can move forward.
Okay, um, I would like to ask the city attorney chairs to discuss the racial discrimination, sexual harassment lawsuits.
What's your point of order?
That's not a referral. That's a request for action.
That's fine.
So, she's out of order.
You can call it a.
That, not a point of order. That's a request for action. Now, you tell her to proceed with action, I'm gonna appeal the ruling.
What is an action, you guys? There is an appeal of the decision of the chair on the floor.
No, I said, "I will." I didn't appeal it. I say, "You ruled her out of order for trying to do action." I'll appeal the ruling of the chair.
So, I don't know the difference. There's a decision of the chair on the floors, they're sa, okay, so it's been moved and seconded. So, Mr. Mays is trying to differentiate whether it's a referral or a request. It's the same thing. She has a right, it's her time, and so, she's given enough time for that to be done. It seems appropriate to me, and so, Mr. Mays has a different view of it. Is there any discussion on that? Mr. Garrett?
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I would say, uh, referrals, I see as requests for information to the departments, especially with executive sessions. The way I've always known it, is that legal typically says that they wanna have an executive session, so I think referrals and order, asking legal to do so.
Mr. Um, Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I got an issue with it, 'cause politically motivated. That's why I have big issue with it. We shouldn't be allowed to have political propaganda controlling this meeting, or requests, especially when you siding one way or the other. I don't know how to say it, but one way. When half of this body's duds, uh, fundraiser at a council person's house, then you come in here requesting information for another political figure, I got big, uh, problems with it. All you want is gathering negative information, and it need to stop immediately, and it should not be requested until after all of the, the election and stuff is over, because it's for a political candidate, and I'm done.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Fields?
I believe that sixteen seventeen, city employees filing racial and sexual harassment, racial discrimination and sexual harassment charges.
What is your point of order, Ms. Fields? What is your point of order?
I don't think that she gotta get into the contents in order to discuss the difference between a referral and action, but let her do it, 'cause I'm gonna have a field day.
Where's your point of order, Mr. Mays? Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Fields.
This pending litigation could end up costing the city millions and millions of dollars, and since one of the main duties of a city council is to, um, provide fiduciary oversight, I think it's pretty important that we hear from our attorneys, uh, what the city's legal position is on this litigation that has been filed against us.
What is your point of information?
She know having nothing been served over here to the city at this time, so what is she talking about? But do I need to put?
Go ahead, um, Ms. Field.
I think I said what I wanted to say.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I listened to her, and didn't even know if she gonna vote yes or no on that one. I assume she'll be voting that she can keep going. This is race. She's white, the plaintiffs is white. She support Neely, you support Neely, and some of us support weed. So, I knew at the beginning of this meeting, she wanted to change the order, 'cause she discriminated against, and she done called me racist in here. Bridge done called the mayor racist. He the one that Maurice talking about the fundraiser at his house. I want them to make them stay here. I didn't want them to interrupt the resolutions and the action to be politically campaigning, um, on a white lawsuit against some black folks. That's what she do. You done let her sneak in multiple, and this ain't even a referral. A referral would have been simply a request for, um, legal to do something, and that would have been to have maybe an executive session, but that's why I say, it wasn't but one referral request. When I heard that one referral, all the multiples, you done let her hijack the agenda, 'cause you ruling illegally and wrong, 'cause you and her in the same bed politically. Y'all supporting and doing the same thing politically. Yes, you are. And so, y'all wanna use this, this platform to campaign. Here she done brought up a lawsuit with seventeen white people saying it's gonna cost the city millions of dollars, and she don't even know that. She don't even know if it's gonna pass summary judgment. She don't even know if it's gonna be settled for ten dollars. But she wanna throw that out there, 'cause if some white folks then sued some black folks for racial discrimination, and she making a big deal out of it, and you condoning it with illegal rulings to let her just sit here and hijack our meeting when we got business to do, and I know if the public don't know it, at the end, she gone. She be gone, Bridge be gone, LeWorthen be gone. They don't show up for the state of the city. They come in here every week trying to hijack the mayor and me, and I'm here to tell you, this is a black person, ain't studying them. And you condoning discrimination. You treat them nice, and you wanna throw me out. You treat them nice, and they be way out of order. You be out of order. Who warns you? Who gonna throw you out? So, this is ridiculous. I'm not finna sit here and try to let her go through another referral that can be made under new business if she wanna show it. I don't care what y'all do. Garrett wanna be president, you wanna be president. Y'all kissing Kate Fields' butt in my mind politically to get a vote, because when it come to, um, Jerry Winfrey collar, Maurice Davis, and Winfrey and myself, we might vote the same. You and Garrett is gonna decide if y'all vote with Kate Fields, Bridge, and Eva, and I want the whole city to watch. I don't try to get Kate Fields votes. And I'm gonna make sure the city watch it, just like they watched Scott Kincaid, Jackie Poplar, Carrie Nelson, and Juan Tress Davis. This has been tried before. Y'all ain't doing nothing up here slick and new. She probably knew about the lawsuit before it was filed. Swear I didn't ask her. What's the lady name? Bucksey. That's the same lady Rum Shrimp talking about. It's some allegations and some nasty white folks talking about black folks. See, we done voted on her one referral, not no multiples, letting her hijack this meeting just to talk about what she want in the form of a referral. That's an action. That's an action. So, she laughing. You can laugh, Ms. Fields, but I got a loud mouth. You can run, but you can't hide. And I'm telling you, I don't bite my tongue when it come to black, white, young, old Democrats, Republicans. This is a swing state. I'm not gonna let nobody in Flint be misled by white folks, black folks, Woodsons, or no folks. I'm gonna do my job. I'm gonna be loud in the voice. I'll be vote no on what you and Kate Fields is trying to do up here.
Um, just for the record, um, Mr. Mays.
Point of order.
What is your point of order?
Are you asking if any more discussion? That's what your job. You just spoke once.
I haven't, but I can just.
You're supposed to speak at the beginning, don't you?
Does anybody else wanna speak? I have everybody's name on the list that wanted to. Thank you, Mr. Mays. Are you satisfied?
So, nobody else wanna speak?
They didn't ask.
And what we in? Point of information in order. What is this an appeal?
I'm closing on your appeal for her to proceed with.
So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. So, just, just for, um, for the record, um, I'm gonna start with what I said at the beginning of the appeal. Um, it is a request for information, whether you see it as a referral or not. We've never in our council, I've been on since thirteen, never have I known that there was a difference or separation, and so, if, if that's only me. But, uh, for the record, Mr. Mays, can you speak for me? What is your point of information?
It's a request for action. Just 'cause you didn't, just 'cause you didn't, um, see it differently, do that mean you're right? And you been here since two thirteen? Is that possible?
No, it doesn't make you right either.
But is it possible you can be wrong is my point. Giving a speech about how long you been, I've been here thirty years.
You guys, Mr. Mays hijacked this meeting. My point is this. Mr. Mays, please. You guys, this just hit the news. We have not had a meeting since this lawsuit has been advertised over all the news stations. And as a legislative body, if this were any other time, or any other group of people, it's not about political people, it's not about a, election, it's about being fiduciaries for this community. So, an executive session, in my opinion, I wasn't gonna ask for one, but is appropriate.
Point of information.
Councilman Mays, you are abusing.
Point of information. Is that a referral?
Yeah, it's a request for information. Thank you, sir. And so, Mr. Mays is out of order and continues to be out of order. I am only one council person, and because we have no police presence, and so, just for the record, he lost his appeal when, when he said he didn't want Ms. Fields to continue, and now she has, and now he's appealing again. And so, this is not my decision. This is a request for information for an executive session. You can see it as an, uh, um, referral or not. And so, that's why I think that is appropriate. So, with that, with all that said, I wanna thank you guys. All in favor of the ruling of the chair, say aye. Those that oppose? Any extensions?
I have the.
Division of the House, Division of the House.
There's, wait, there's a difference. All in favor of the ruling of the chair, say aye. Those that oppose? So, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Fields, if you can, please wrap up.
I would like to make a referral for the last time to Mr. Branch. Through you to Mr. Branch. I want documentation that the four hundred and thirty-three thousand that was taken out of the sewer and water fund to pay the AECOM invoice was paid back into the sewer and water fund. I want the documentation.
So, you have all of her referrals, you have her request for executive session, and her three referrals, it sound like, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks. So, now, we are on Mr. Mays's emergency marijuana ordinances.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm gonna have Reed, Reed, however you wanna join us, can you come forward? Have you passed out both, um, proposed ordinances?
I have.
And Reed, I'd to enlighten, um, this council on what some of the things you have planned and commissioned. I've been privileged to have, um, conversation with you, but before you start, I want this council to understand this. These are emergency ordinance. It takes six votes to enact. And I think we learned in your absence, Ms. Galloway, when folks dig in and try to do stuff their own way, Mr. Garrett, sometime it fails four to four, just like these appeals. That's the beauty of something passing five or four to four. Right or wrong, these votes mean something. So, I'm gonna say to y'all, as you hear this, and as we move through this, those same five folks who try to run together, Mr. Garrett, if you wanna talk to Ms. Fields our way. If you wanna pay attention, Ms. Galloway, if you wanna high and honk and interrupt me and show an attitude, your demeanor is admissible. Ms. Galloway, um, Ms. Fields and Mr. Garrett is admissible, 'cause you tried to remove me for whispering to Garrett in a meeting, and you chairing.
Point of order to you, Mr. Mays. You are out of order. Please continue. You are speaking of something that has nothing to do with now.
It has a lot to do with now. When my colleagues is talking and not listening, it has a lot to do with it. And when you tried to throw me out of a meeting for talking to a colleague, you don't want me to bring that up when you see the white folks do it. But when the black folk did it, you wanted to throw me out, so I want their attention, and I don't care if she leave or not. I want it to, uh, not talking to each other, 'cause you tried to throw me out when I talked to a colleague, and I had never seen that in thirty years. I'm used to your nasty discrimination. This is an emergency ordinance. It takes six votes to enact. One of them gonna deal with opting in, and one of them gonna deal with opting out. If neither one of them down to six votes, then the state is free to put them everywhere. For those people like, um, yourself, Ms. Galloway, who don't. A chance. I can't talk to these folks when you, 'cause Galloway don't wanna hit me anyway, Reed.
Mr. Mays, please.
Ms. Galloway, I got the floor, right? I got the floor, right? And it's, um, I requested, right? Do I interrupt you when you giving kids your special orders and certificates? I sit there and listen. I don't like to be treated differently by you, especially. My position is this. My position is this. Be very careful, no weed or marijuana. It's here, the train and left the station. It's gonna be in Burton, it's gonna be in, um, Mount Morris Township, my dividing line on Cloud Road. You can vote no in Flint, and they can walk right across the street and get two ounces and come back in and smoke it. So, Ms. Galloway, you might not never vote yes.
Point of order. Mr. Mays, I want you to stop using my name. Just talk to your.
You shouldn't have never said, "Stop using your name," because I'm gonna use it more and more now that I don't want, that you don't want me to do it. You are a council person. You are elected official. I can say your name, I can say Maurice Davis' name, I can say the mayor's name, I can say any elected official's name, and I want the public to know, you don't want nobody say your name. That's gonna make me say your name three times. Ms. Galloway, Ms. Galloway, Ms. Galloway.
Mr. Mays, where our rules are silent, Robert's rules take precedent, and you are violating Robert's rules, or you are not to call any of our names. You are supposed to speak specifically about an office and not our name, and you guys know that's in the rules, and so, I'm asking you to just proceed. You're wasting our time. You're wasting our time.
See if you wanna appeal?
Not to you.
Oh, well, I don't want you wanting you. If you can say you, I can say Galloway, Galloway, Galloway. Councilperson Galloway. You barking up a wrong tree politically to tell me not to say your name. I'm gonna say it more not than ever, 'cause I know you don't wanna be, point how you wanna vote on this legislation, and I'm telling you, six votes gonna control. And it ain't gonna make me lose league if it ain't nothing in place. This is an emergency order. The deadline is November first. I don't care how you vote, Ms. Galloway, I'm just hipping you to base it on the position. Point of order. Why won't you warn yourself for talking when I got some flow? Warn yourself and throw your own self out.
Well, the chair, I don't know how the chair.
And the chair, you can't abuse it. You're out of order. I'm saying to y'all, will you throw her out? The chair don't make you. The chair don't make you be able to interrupt people when they got the flow on a special order, you abusing the chair, cause you don't like the contents of what this council person is saying. You even said, don't say nobody's name. That's the foolishest thing I ever heard in thirty years of council meeting. I'm gonna say Jackie Poplar, I'm gonna say Monica Galloway, Carrie Nelson, Santino Garrett, Herb Winfrey, I'm gonna say Maurice Davis, and I'm gonna say Greed. I'm gonna say whatever name I want, I call it freedom of speech, and you ain't gonna throw me out for saying her name. That's ridiculous. And so, the point is this. He finna present these. One is an opt-in, and one is an opt-out. The opt-out fail, it need to fail. People done voted, the train and Leicester Station, this is gonna be about six votes, one way or another. Or if it don't get to that threshold, guess what'll happen? The floodgates, in my opinion, are open, because we won't have nothing in place, because certain people, they made it, in some cases, form of recreational marijuana. And I don't know, maybe that's Ms. Galloway. Go ahead, Reed.
Thank you, Councilman Mays. So very briefly, as Councilman Mays addressed, um, since the proposed code twelve ninety-six, uh, failed staff for legal and for planning and zoning, have worked hard on prepar, preparing an emergency option uh, that could nonetheless be passed prior to November first, which is effectively the deadline for the city to have an ordinance on the books for recreational marijuana. We have drafted two distinct options that are before, because that's commendable. Um, so both options include a statement explaining the rationale for the emergency ordinance, which is required under the charter, which is that the state of Michigan will grant a license to any applicant in the absence of a city ordinance restricting or prohibiting that location, so long as it's not within an area zone exclusively for residential use, and within a thousand feet of a school for kindergarten or grades one through twelve. And that's it, that's set forth in the, in MIRMA, the Michigan, uh, the recreational law.
So Reed, do you have copies of that for us, just so that we can see where you're pulling at from the state of Michigan?
Um, I, I, I do not expect any of you to have it, uh, still, but if you recall when I handed out highlighted code, uh, when we were discussing the last iteration, we didn't actually get to discuss it, but I had a handout with highlights and that, that was those sections. But so, my point is, they're not here right now, but I will get them.
Okay, Reed, can, can you just tell me which one, which one is which?
Yes.
Cause I just have two that.
Correct, I'm, I'm, I'm getting there, I just wanna talk about what's involved, and then I'll talk about each. Okay. So, uh, because those are the only locational restrictions, uh, it's our position, I mean, in the absence of an ordinance, preschools, parks, and places of worship. Despite the fact that under the city's medical ordinance, those uses are not allowed to be adjacent to it, because it requires an ordinance on the both that applies to recreational marijuana. So this result, combined with the immediate necessity of an ordinance by November first, would constitute an emergency affecting the welfare and property of the residents of the city of Flint, for the purposes of the charter, section three, three oh seven, allowing emergency ordinance for sixty days. Uh, so both ordinances include that section, as well as a statement of intention, that the city will work on kind of in this sixty. Now we get into the two different ordinances. One is the emergency sixty day opt-in, as Councilman Mays was describing. So, we are limited by our inability to change the zoning code, uh, because under the zoning enabling act, you have to have a public hearing with, with the planning commission before you can bring change to the zoning code to this body. Can't do that in such a, uh, short time period. Uh, but we can nonetheless piggyback on the zoning code under the medical marijuana ordinance, and allow for the related recreational licenses, growing, processing, and retail slash provisioning in, uh, so the, the, the areas where marijuana is allowed would remain the same under this proposed, uh, opt-in ordinance. Applications would be taken and evaluated in the same manner, subject to the same criteria as outlined in fifty dash one eight three, the medical opt-in ordinance. Uh, the only difference is the license cap, as identified in that section, but not inherently related to zoning, are elim, would be eliminated for recreational medical marijuana establishments. And the, the view that we as staff have taken, is that when we said you have a forty-five day window, we think that that actually increased demand for people to apply for these license types, cause it was now or never. If you compare the growing processing license types, that we have no cap on, and have allowed people to apply at any time, they have come in one here, one there. So I think we actually, through the rubric process and the limit on the licenses, have, have in a sense, kind of, when you take your thumb on the end of the hose and you get a lot more pressure, we artificially increased, uh, demand because we restricted supply. I don't think we have, we had nineteen applicants, some of the applications, I think, were just kind of gotten indicated under the deadline. I don't think necessarily that all of them would want to go through the planning commission still, but we would, we would remove the like, the cap, because I don't see a scenario where we allow the recreational licenses in, uh, without that cap, without running into serious issues with the medical cap. So that isn't a necessary update that we added there. Uh, but nonetheless, the city, uh, recognizes the efforts and commitments made in the rubric scoring process, and people that have gone through that lengthy ordeal, many of whom are still in line, we are moving them through the planning commission. Now, in recognition of those efforts and, uh, commitments, the city would exhaust the provisioning center list before it would, so you, we can still take the application anytime, you'd have to get in line, so to speak, to just get your hearing before the planning commission. So that's the opt-in, it's good for sixty days, we would immediately start working on a more permanent ordinance. The opt-out is much simpler, it's a sixty day opt-out, it does not have the exception for, uh, the medical facilities to get their recreational license immediately, like the old draft did. Some of the, a lot of the public comment at the last hearing, was about the perception of fairness for people being able to, um, get their recreational license and market share, so to speak, earlier than others. Um, and for sixty days, it's just an opt-out of all recreational licenses while we can get an ordinance put together. That's still a narrow window, but I think we can do it, including with satisfaction of planning commission, and we're limited by sixty days for an emergency ordinance, uh, but this would be a uniform opt-out of all licenses for recreational marijuana. Let me be very clear, that we don't have the ability to stop people from using or possessing it, and so I just don't, I just don't want that to be reported, that the city is making that, uh, when we say we're opting out entirely. We, we don't have that ability. But nonetheless, the licenses, it would be a total opt-out. So the, Councilman Galloway, to answer your question, the, what should have been, I believe, the second in the pile is the temporary prohibition, that's just a uniform opt-out. And then the emergency sixty day opt-in is, is the first one I described.
So, just to see the difference, Reed.
Yes.
They, um, I don't know how to tell the difference with them, so if you could tell me, if you could just write like, opt-out and opt-in. Oh, where, where, I'm sorry.
So temporary prohibition, I'll just write out on your copy.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
It's, it's kinda tucked in, I understand.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, Mr. Mr. Winfrey.
So, so, so just to clarify.
Yes.
So then, I'll just change the prohibition.
Yes. For sixty days, just for us to get a permanent, uh, and for, for context, and what's referenced in the statement for the emergency circumstances. If you look, uh, test your handouts and, and the large copy that planning provided, every green parcel on the city, on that city map, would be eligible under the state law for someone to get a marijuana license, uh, in the absence of an ordinance.
Did anyone have any questions?
Is it possible to get the map as well? To go with this, it's like you said, with the ordinance that we have.
The current medical map.
Yeah, yeah, can we get that?
No problem.
Uh, and then, uh, other than that, I mean, um, thanks for getting the scratches, so basically we got, at that timeframe.
That's it, that's it, Mr. Mays.
Yeah, um, Reed, I knew you could draft an ordinance, and that's why I say fail the one, and then get to work on another, sixty days though, but you still got a lot of work to do.
That's right.
Not a lot, but when you start dealing in commission, so I told him at the last meeting, the only way out now is an emergency ordinance. It's kind of political. When you sit in these seats, and the people of the city of Flint, Genesee County, and the state of Michigan vote in favor of something, I'm not gonna be the one to vote contrary. When you see Burton, Mount Morris Township on either side of us, where in some cases you can walk across the street and get some smoking, it don't make sense not to get revenue for this city as it relates to something. Some people think I drank alcohol, I don't. You can't really find it in my house regularly, I've drunk it when I go out, but people buying it regularly. Some people on this council might not drunk, but they buying it. Some people might not smoke, I smoked cigarette. In two thousand nineteen, and I can see them sitting in prohibition lawmakers. So that's where we at, we lawmakers. The people done voted. The people done voted, and you don't have to uphold it, you can say I don't agree with anything, the people vote for and I vote no, you have that right? I'm just talking about me, when I look at this thing. So I'll see if we get six votes on the opt-in, you've done a good job, I'm Reed. And for those who voted the opt-out last time, that would have been you, Mr. Garrett, at opt-in. So when you voted the opt-out, you understood that that had language where they could sell at the medical places. So, for all of those who was voting the opt-out, they were really voting to allow sales at the places that, um, already sell medical. So now, the legal department then went through great lengths to come up with something that fits the opt-in. And that's what the perception was, this was a perception, everywhere I went, they was asking, have weed in Flint? Why they say we can't have marijuana in Flint? And I say, cause that's them. I say, but we blocked it. And so, we gonna try to see if we can send the right message. Flint is gonna have recreational marijuana. The only question is, is Flint gonna capitalize on some of the money? Or is we gonna opt-out and can't distribute and sell? This is a good start. The opt-in. And then when we do that within sixty days, I'm gonna continue to work with legal, I'm gonna continue to go to planning commission meetings and planning commission can come here, just like Mr. Wesley and that nightward lady, if they continue to choose. That's how you work together as a city. Reed, I'm proud that you got this together, and, uh, these ordinances will show up, what, on our agenda Monday? Do we don't have to move them from council, to what, they'll show up in special affairs?
No, you'd have to move them.
Okay, so, I would move both the opt-in and the out, out ordinance, um, to special affair.
There's a motion to move that to special affair, Mr. Davis?
I see.
And move in second, is there any discussion? Why wouldn't you go to the floor? There's a motion on the floor, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of moving it to special affairs, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose? Any abstentions? Moves to special affair. So now we are on resolution number one nine zero three nine three.
We, I hope the rest of council received this, um, referral response about the, uh, cities of comparable size policies for acquired homes. Did everyone receive this? Okay, I'm not, I just got this today, I've not had an opportunity to read it.
I haven't received.
I would like to move that one nine zero three nine three, one nine zero three nine four, nine five, nine six, nine seven, nine eight. Uh, be moved back to next committee, be postponed to next committee.
There's a motion on the floor to postpone these to the next committee, is there a second?
I'll see.
Mr. Greed is gonna move the second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair. Yeah, we finally got Jefferson School voted on after four years. And we still be working on some nuances in there, I talked to Pastor George, whatever. Now, Miss Fields, in this uncrowded, what you calling, I'm gonna call it a uncrowded, um, committee meeting agenda for finance. And since she wanna move them all together, I'm gonna separate one nine zero three nine four, one nine zero three nine five. I'm gonna separate one nine zero three nine six, and I'm gonna separate one nine zero three nine seven, and I'm gonna separate one nine zero three nine eight.
Parliamentary inquiry.
What is your parliamentary inquiry?
I don't, I don't believe you can separate out of motion.
And so, I need, I, I, I need to, I don't, I don't, I don't know. So my question become.
I'm hearing you.
Mr. Mays, I want you to refrain, what's your point of information?
Will you say loud and clear that you don't know you can separate?
I absolutely, no.
And you've been here since how long?
Mr. Since thirteen.
Oh, okay.
My question becomes, you guys, with this separation, normally when we're on the floor, you can't separate every single item, because then you automatically eliminate the motion that's on the floor. If she makes a motion to postpone, and he separates each and every one of them, he has taken away her opportunity. You're looking like you don't understand what I'm saying. Well, you're looking at me like that, I'm just trying to. You don't know what I'm looking at. Ms. Winfrey Carter. I don't, I'ma say it. You, and you need to change your tone. Well, I, I'm, I didn't have a tone any kind of way, I'm. Your tone is very condescending tonight. It started off initial.
Point of order.
What is your point of order? So my point is, you guys.
Ms. Winfrey Carter does not have the floor.
Right, you guys, I'm just asking, you do have the opportunity to separate, but never during a motion of move. Move means that technically, the motion is no longer a motion. Does that make sense, Mr. President?
I understand what you're saying, but, uh, I don't think that we, we have the, when we, when we, when we, when we do the motion and then there's separation, let's say that there are six items. There's never been a prohibition on how many we could have. So I'm saying, if, if I wanted to sep, if, if, if somebody made a motion to move all of these, and I really wanted to talk about all of it, but because we haven't done it before.
We have.
Well, I think we have as well. I don't think there's an issue with separating them all, even if, I know it cancels it out.
So do you get to cancel her motion?
No, point of order, point of order, point of order. I didn't separate one nine zero three nine three.
I didn't, I didn't.
You just didn't, you didn't, nobody.
I'm learning, thank you.
You should be chair if you still learning, it costs long meat. Put somebody in there who already know, I'm really the chair.
Well, then be the chair, you wanna be a ten.
Yeah, you wanna give it up, resign like Kate, that's how, resign.
I didn't say that, Mr. Carter.
I, I did think you were talking, it was made of a better version, you make a master resolution, you can separate. However, this isn't a master resolution, I, I don't see a problem with separating them personally, but I think we do separate a master resolution.
We do.
However, I just, at that, I don't see this.
So, so now there's a separation of everything except the first one.
Yes, I'm Madam Chair.
So there's a motion on, Mr. Mays, one second please. So right now, there's a motion on the floor only to postpone. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair. I got discussion on one nine zero three nine three. One nine zero three nine three is a land bank property for seventeen ten West Home. Nice brick house, nice family, and recently met them during this process, and they done called me, um, two, three times, Marie. Me and Millhouse and Lynette Phillips went by there, I done asked every council person to knock on their door if they choose. I'm gonna fight to get these people their property. And I don't care if Miss Fields who voted no, never did it, and I don't care if Ms. Galloway, who voted no on these people's property, don't give it to them. But I seen Rich and Gina and Carol McIntosh on Facebook yesterday doing a fine job encouraging people to look at these profits. Look at these foreclosures. Now here you got council people, oh, we don't want foreclosures, uh, water leans on their property, people need their property. When it come to getting property, I want y'all fired, Miss Galloway. It's a new project. The land bank got a vehicle to help folk get their property. And the Genesee County Treasurer got a second chance program where you can go over and make payments and keep your property. The city of Flint ain't got nothing for folk property. Here we are in about ten or twenty trying to develop policy, have developed policy. Ms. Worden don't even know we voted on a policy, she ain't here today, she kept saying check the record, we need a policy in place. I'm saying, Lord have mercy, she don't know the majority of us done voted on a policy? Now here Miss Fields ain't talked about nothing, we in committee, she wanna get them out of committee with no discussion, and I done mechanically showed up, it's gonna be some discussion on each one of them. Let me say this, I'll be voting no to postpone seventeen ten West Home Street. And anybody who wanna get people in here for lawsuits that was just recently filed, but won't get the right people and make a referral to find, been out here way longer than a lawsuit of seven, of twelve or seventeen white folks. But that's what she interested in, a lawsuit, it's a lawsuit, seventeen white folks saying the blacks is racist. This been here, Ms. Fields, make a referral on that. Or getting these folks their property, they black? Just, you could have picked property for white folks in your ward. Or black ones too. I don't bite my tongue when it come to black, white, young, old Democrats and Republicans. I just happen to be a strong Democrat. So, I'm gonna vote no. If this don't get five votes, guess what happens? Then I'm gonna put a motion to move it to council. Enough is enough.
I'm going to talk about the same things I've talked about since these have come on. There is a price attached to these properties. The city of Flint has no policy about how we put a price or evaluation on these. It's not like it's ten percent of S E B or something that has been arrived at. Basically, Mr. Millhouse, the attorney, was asked how this price was arrived, that, he said, ask Mr. Mays, he set the price. I believe that. Uh, it is illegal for a city council person to both pull out the properties in his ward. For people who didn't pay their taxes, would like to get their house back for far less than what their taxes would cost them. Um, and then set a price on it. And expect council to approve that, I think this is, and I think the complaint, yeah, but I am gonna file a complaint. With the A G's office if council does this, because I think there is extreme cronyism going on here. And I don't think this is fair to any of those people out there in the city who are paying their property taxes. It is not fair to say, uh, you don't have to pay them, you don't have to pay them because you're buddies of mine. But, oh yeah, you have to pay them, so don't pay your taxes, and I'll give it to you for a lot less than your taxes would be. And for those council people who sit there and argue about, there's not enough money for blight, there's not enough money for. Don't even have an agreement or a policy that states that these people must uh remain. Uh, current with their property taxes, or, or lose the property if they don't pay their first years or up to five years following. I mean, this is, has major flaws in it, I believe it's illegal, and I certainly am not going to vote for it. And last thing I would like to say is, Madam Chair, this is not your fault, you were, you're making a valiant effort. But, um. Every discussion, every dialogue, every point of order, every point of information. Leads to some racial reference inference. Um, derogatory statement from Mr. Mays, and um if I have to leave these meetings, it's because I simply can't put up with that anymore. That is not acceptable. It's not acceptable to anyone, black or white in the city.
Want the record show she called me the most racist person she ever met in her life, and you know the people know, cause I say Ms. Fields. I don't know if you're racist, er racist, so the, the actual allegation of racist, wouldn't it be fair for you to acknowledge and know? That her and him called black folks racist in an open meeting, that's where it started at. Well, they whatever, it's just some good facts.
You're out of order, Mr. Mays.
She out of order calling folks racist, and misogynist, not statistic, and you ain't checked them once. Okay, well.
Okay, and so, so that's your, that's your last warning, are you gonna leave, Mr. Mays?
No, no, I would vote it in.
I want you to um say that for the record, so Ms. Ms. Fields, you still have the floors.
Councilperson can vote for this knowing that there's no basis for it, there's no city policy. Um, it, it's totally uh cronyism, which is helping your friends. Okay, nepotism is helping your relatives benefit using taxpayer resources, which is illegal.
Point of information. Didn't I say we was on one property, one nine zero three nine three, and didn't I say on the record I had just met them people? And she calling them my friends and relatives, check her for those attacks.
Or you're abusing a point of information and point of order, Mr. Mays.
Ain't she calling this black man a crook? Illegal, and you condoning it?
Man, I, I'm not a judge or jury. She, if, if you feel like it's a personal attack, Ms. Fields, please refrain from any personal attacks, but Mr. Mays, you too. With the white folks and the this and the that, it's unacceptable. So now you're, you're personal attacking, and you're asking that it not be done to you.
I don't like discrimination.
Ms. Fields. Um, you still have the floor if you want, you're right.
I'd just like to make note of. Um. I gave a definition of, in general, of cronyism and nepotism. I did not make any personal allegations or attacks.
I'm gonna wait till Councilman Garrett, is he out there with a camera or what? Hey, Garrett. He watching the camera, come here.
I mean, he's not, he stepped away, yeah.
Use them down.
Come on, I want you to hear this.
If we wait for council people to attend meetings, we'll be never getting nothing done, Mr. Briggs.
Now, there's a problem that I think may happen with. All of these in general, let's just talk about this one on three nine three. Let me refer to my notes here. Now, selling this for a thousand dollars. It's a nice brick home, Councilman May said, so it could be worth ninety fifty thousand. Fair market value. Now, if you sell a distressed home before. Market price. Sell price saved for a thousand dollars, and that's forty nine thousand dollar differential market, treat it as a gift. That puts it in a twenty five percent tax bracket. And a tax liability of approximately eleven thousand eight hundred dollars, plus penalties and interest. Now, I don't know that, and these people may run into an insurance problem. Trying to get these places insured. I think there's a problem, and it needs to be further investigated. And. And I, I agree with postponement, thank you.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just trying to figure out why my colleagues is always, that is a major issue when it comes to poor folks. But when we get corporate welfare, which is tax abatement, to all these different corporations that come to the community, there's no problem. The people that elect you need help from time to time. I got an issue, people over in my ward eighty two to ninety years old, I feel they should live free after a certain age. Roof repair.
Can Ms. Fields pay attention to her and Garrett having a different meeting?
Mr. Mays, you, you, you have been having different meetings, please just let Mr. Davis continue.
This is what I'm saying. The politics in this room is, is just, i- i- is just out of order. People hurting, we have Mr. Woodson them doing whatever they do, and bless the heart for whatever they do. But people actually dying still from the water and everything else, this is a real tragedy in this community, cause this leadership. Was supposed to be leadership, ain't doing nothing but politics. When it come to helping people, they had dollar houses. People now, land bank, you can't, I know the policy at land bank, I bought houses, I bought a house across the street, nice house. Four hundred and seventy seven dollars pocket change out of my front pocket, they set their own prices. Land bank didn't buy no house, it was, gave the number through what, foreclosure from the treasury. So it ain't like they buying property, we up here politics. To help somebody that lost their house on hardship, they need to have a way, but not only do they need a way, they need a way to rehab them houses. And we supposed to be the body that Councilman May say, we don't see eye to eye on a lot of things, but he absolutely correct. Why wouldn't we go out our way, when you tapping at them doors to elect me and I'm gonna set you free stuff, we need to stand up to our word. The politics of what's going on this table is hurting a lot of people. And yes ma'am, I would stand up to say, people do need help, I needed help at one time. But land bank is not no big real estate company here, that is a tragedy. They pulling down hardest hip fund that was intended for people to live in their houses, who sitting at this table saying how corrupt that is? And I, I don't have nothing against Michelle no more at the land bank, but people need help. When Obama put that in place, it wasn't a tear down your house, a demo, 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 where you gonna live? Right now the news on, and I tell uh uh Suzanne them, wait a minute. You're absolutely right, we gotta do something to keep people in their houses, this the body that do it. Now, if you so heart, wholeheartedly with this new administration. I hope the poor folks, I'm gonna politic the camera now, see what you in for, you about to lose everything you got because the news on it is on green space. Dayton is on as an apple arch, how in the world you gonna have an apple arch without tearing down the folks' house? It is no help over there, I had a conversation yesterday with Ms. Margaret that Habitat just retired. I said, Ms. Margaret, please help me come up with a way that people pay down, I don't state funds, it is not qualified. You gotta do what they say with their money. I'm willing to come up with a benefit that people. But what I'm saying is this, y'all, at the end of the day, people do need help. We only have a problem when it come to helping the poorest of the poor, we never have no issue when it come to helping rich folks. Call tax abatement, and thank you for the.
Sir, Mr. Garrett?
Yeah, um, I had, I made a referral to um legal in regards specifically, so I would keep it relative. Uh, to see the prices where it came from, I know Mr. Mr. Mays brought these to us, I was legal, but Mr. Attorney Millhouse stated in the meeting that he believed that our policy only applied to the first seven houses that we had. Um, taken in, and then Mr. Mays pointed out that the policy never specifically specified, so I made a referral to legal, I haven't got it. So I guess since Steve uh is the only person from administration, uh, does the administration have any comment on these prices? What, I mean.
Can I ask me?
Yeah, so, and I know, and I, you had re answered, but I.
You can ask me for the record, I said.
Yeah, just, my point was that the attorney, I had requested it specifically working on his house, I don't want to carry you under the bus, I know that you're, you're working on other stuff. But to, to the administration part, do you know if it was signed on on the last one that we sent over from the Burson approval? If that was, if that approved.
If what, what?
If the mayor approved us sending over, we sent the Burson property.
Point of information, that wasn't a sale.
Do you know if that was approved?
Mr. Mays, please.
Well, do you, then tell her, please. Yeah, cause I'm black and she white and you checked me and thus her get away with murder.
Please, don't say anything. You, you did blur it out, but you guys come on, Mr. Garrett has the floor.
Do you, Madam Chair, to the, to, to Steve, do you know if the last property required from the land bank was properly transferred over?
I don't know if there's property transferred, but I don't think that would be the whole end of it. Yes, come back in council.
Mr. Garrett, I don't know that everything has gone to get signatures yet, and some of them we haven't gotten back. It would be mostly Davina that would be able to answer that question.
And then, and then my other question is, um, to the, uh, just administration as well. Uh, in regards to the prices of these houses, do they, how, how they think that the prices should be determined?
Let me start out first, if I may.
If Mr. Mays wants to answer that too, I mean, yes.
I appreciate your question, Mr. Garrett, let me say this, Mr. Garrett, those seven houses. The land bank had went and signed land contracts with those people illegally, prematurely. Because for fifteen or twenty years, we had never took property. Prior to it going to the land bank. This is a new project of ties, so when we took these, they had to go back and knock on those people's doors. And say, that land contract. We can't import, the city took the property. Some of them had signed for two or three thousand dollars, which was about the amount of the back taxes. Whatever that amount of back taxes was, the land bank had signed land contracts of payments to like two hundred a month. Until they get it paid off. When we took the property, then I went and knocked on the door and said, hey, cause they were mad. They were calling the city attorney's office, and I said, I'm gonna try my best to get you a price. Lower than what the land bank is to above any lawsuits. And guess what they said? Okay, Councilman Mays, and that's where we at now. And I've said that two or three times, when Ms. Fields says on the record, he's never told us any rationale on why he's setting these prices. That's not true, when most folks say it, but with her, she's saying it as a lie. Because it's been. Because I don't even know some of these folks. They came to me, so, let me finish, she asked me a question about the prices on them set. That's how these prices has been set, to avoid a lawsuit and keep it way under two, three thousand. Or two thousand, or whatever it is, under what the land bank had signed land contracts on. Those land contracts should still be in the record. And I'm not gonna argue about whether a house should transfer back. For three thousand in West Home is one of them. And I'm telling you, we can prove it, and I'm telling you, I didn't know these people. They weren't nepotisms, they weren't cronyism, they were residents who me and the block club, it wasn't just me. The block club president is Sean Harrison.
What's your point of order?
He asked me a question.
Answered his question, Mr. Mays.
Let me answer it my way, you don't interrupt the administration and nobody else, do y'all hate me, I say you here on the record? We want a thorough.
Thank you, and so.
And if the, and my other part was, if the administration could put their covenant to the housing crisis, cause I would hate to see us go through all this work. And then it gets sent over to the administration, then they not.
Point of information. Yeah, the administration has been working with me through Lynette Phillips, who was assigned. Me from the council, and Lynette Phillips from the administration, and Millhouse from the legal. Just so you know, it ain't people in the. Why y'all so scared to get information? So, realize that it's.
So, point of information, Mr. Garrett, are you aware that Suzanne Wilcox does have? How we should be assessing these properties? And so, are you aware that she has any information that would answer all of these questions? Saying that she does not, these figures have nothing to do with their.
She's unavailable here today.
I know.
That's, that was what I had been wanting to see for these properties, is they actually get what they, they thought the estimate should be, to make sure we're doing it. Properly, so that's why my request is through you to.
Point of information. Point of information. Do you realize the council decides that? That's our authority.
Yeah, so, could you ask that through?
So, through the administration, do you want to make a substitute motion, special affairs, I don't know?
I guess this is. Where's this motion? To next committee.
Yeah.
Let us make that request for information, next committee, if you have Ms. Wilcox here to explain some of the prices she thinks.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Uh, Ms. Fields, you have a.
That I voted against, that the council gave away for a certain price, went to a nonprofit, but if I'm understanding what Mr. Briggs is saying, okay, is that we need to be careful because while. The intent is to help poor people, if this isn't done correctly and the prices aren't set correctly. They may actually be assessed in I R S taxes, something like this first property, eleven thousand dollars. How is that going to help this family? And investigated, that's why I'm trying to get these postponed, go back to committee, so we can get more information.
Is that, you want, you, are you saying that to me through the? And Miss, do you just want them to know?
I, I would like to ask Mr. Briggs, was that correct? And did I understand you correctly, is that what you were saying?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so, so for a family that's going to get a property for a thousand dollars, what they don't know is they may later be paid correctly. A thousand dollars, so perhaps they wouldn't want this property for a thousand if they know the I R S is gonna be hot on their tail. For an additional eleven thousand, so I just think if we actually want to help people. We should probably. Get more information on how this is going to work, because that will not help people, especially poor people.
Point of information, Madam Chair.
I want his, do you want your point of information to be answered by?
What I'm trying to figure out is, 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 what's the form of it, is it speculation?
He's gonna, well, he's gonna, well, he read something that's worth the eleven thousand, so do you wanna reread it for me?
Yeah, I can reread, and it's also from past experience dealing with taxes.
My note here is what I've written to myself regarding sale of distressed homes at below market prices. If the fair market value of this property on Hamilton is fifty thousand and the sell price is a thousand. Deduct a thousand from fifty thousand, you come up with forty nine thousand differential treated as a gift. Twenty five percent, that puts in a twenty five percent tax bracket. And the tax liability approximately eleven thousand eight hundred plus.
There is a point of information here. Thank you. You had a point of information?
Yes, ma'am. Let me tell you something. Every year over here you could bring.
Do you want the floor? You have, uh, you, I didn't keep yours. I think you had like two minutes. You got two minutes.
Every city have people down in, no, in city hall, that you could bring your taxes over here. It depends on how much you buy the property for. I done bought tons of property. And I know a lot of people buy a whole lot of property. It ain't that all the space stuff, you must own buy property. I own property. It don't work like that, ma'am. And then according to your neighborhood. You don't just, if you give me a house for a dollar, guess what? My taxes is dirt cheap right now. But let me go and do, I I could bring it up. But it's according to the environment of the neighborhood I'm located in. What kind of fantasy you in? Buy you some property. Quit renting, buy you some property. Thank you for indulging.
Ms. Mace.
Yeah, Madam Chair, let me say this. Um, it ain't a gift. When it's sold, it's sold for a thousand. It could be the market back, but you really take what prices have sold for in the area. So all these hypothetical, while Ms. Ms. Phil is doing her thing, trying to influence the vote, she can influence. And there she gets something, you know, she can't influence me. I don't care if it stay here as long as Jefferson. He can sit here on this council agenda for four years. I'm, this was created to get him and give him back. Because we don't want the liability. We don't wanna get sued. We don't wanna hold on this longer than we should. And so Ms. Phil is hopping from nepotism to latch on to something Mr. Briggs said about a gift. And gift taxes. Ain't a gift. It's sold for a smart cert. And that's the property. Now, it might be some truth to it. Y'all can postpone it two weeks, don't postpone it five. Don't postpone it a month. Y'all can do what you want. But I'm telling you, every meeting y'all do this, do your homework. If Mr. Briggs done some homework, God bless him, bring back, we'll check that out. If Ms. Phil wants to do some homework on cronyism, nepotism and illegal activity, go do it. You putting me on the old map. I know them folks till I met. Now, this is a mess. I'm gonna see what five people do. Have I made a motion to send this to?
There's a motion on the floor.
To postpone it. That's by Ms. Phil. I'm gonna vote no on the motion to postpone the one property, which is on Home Street. Which is ready to go. I'll be voting no to postpone.
So, um, this is my first time, Mr. Briggs wants to speak again, but you guys, we have beat this horse. He has not.
Yes, he did.
No, he didn't. Answered the question, Mr. Mace. You guys, Mr. Mace.
Well, I'm up in front of you. You talk about me like a dog. I'm a dog. I'm a politician. You ain't fooling me and these people need, everybody talking to me about you.
You guys, there is not one.
Point of order, then you say it's Briggs, why you talk?
It's my turn.
Didn't you say?
No, I said, I'm speaking, Mr. Mace, I want you to just stop bothering me.
I'm using my point of order and point of information. Point of order, point of, yes, I did. I said, point of order, he has spoke twice. You said he hadn't. One was a point of information. I thought that you was calling him and then you was speaking. So I can point of order and say I and be wrong. You you wrong twenty times. Don't tell me how to utilize my point of orders and points.
You know what, Mr. Mace? I am over you. I am ruling you out of this meeting and I have the authority to do it.
Why are you fussing at me and you should be talking?
You didn't do a point of order.
Do a point of order. I'm doing what now? Why are you talking to me? And fussing at me? And you should be talking. You said it was your turn and and we on a motion not to fuss and punch your thing at me. Should I appeal your ruling to keep talking to me? Quit talking to me and do your thing. Don't threaten me. Ms. Phil, bye.
Talked about these properties for two years, two years. There is no reason why we should be having this. I I'm not, I respect what you're saying because Suzanne Wilcox came here and said that these prices and Millhouse, if you look at the record, not what Mr. Mace is saying, but what Mr. Millhouse said. He said the only properties that he was aware of is the first eight. The second seven, he had nothing to do with. And and half of these properties are a part of the second set. And so what I'm saying is, we know it or not. And so I'm just hoping that we would move on and vote it up or down and wherever it's going. And so, Mr. Um, Briggs, you wanted to speak, you had another minute and twenty seconds. Just the second round though, Mr. Mace.
My only concern is for the people that move into these homes. You know, I want them to see see them happy, but I don't wanna see them get into trouble with the IRS. And that's why I made this statement. I don't mind them moving into their homes. We got too much rentals as it is in this city. But, uh, I I'm just worried about the residents. And I want them to be covered, you know? I I don't know, you'll check into it further. I I don't know if we even have a CPA on 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 employment. I don't know if we have one or not, but it's, it turns into a very, uh, very critical question, maybe through the legal department to some CPA. To find out. What what are the rights? Yes, please.
You got that? Thank you. And so, um, so the motion on the floor is to postpone it to the next committee meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Raise hands, please.
Oh, all that, um, app- oppose, say aye. I mean, um.
Give me a division of the house. She wanna see who voted.
The postponement, say aye.
In light of what's happened here, I don't know what Mr. Briggs and what Mr. Garrett gonna do. But if people wanna check out the tax structure and what people pay if they buy a house for a thousand, I bought one for three thousand. And living in that.
Mr. Mace, are you making a motion?
I'm talking, I got the flow. Why are you interrupting me and I got the flow? That's what your mindset. I didn't say it. So I wish you would quit abusing and discriminating against me when I talk. Treat me like you treat the white folks. Say nothing. I know you want it, they vote. Let me be me. I'm start, can I speak again without you talking to me ignorant and condescending?
I am not going to be in a meeting where there are no rules, you guys.
I got the flow.
Well, you you get the floor to make, you can't have.
Ms. Galloway, you out of order. And if you do it again, remove your seat. Now, I have the flow. I'm elected to discuss business on a program with housing. And we talking about seventeen ten West Home. Now, through you whoever, Mr. Garrett. If I if I move this to council, if you gonna move with it or against, because I ain't gonna make no motion to lose that. So this is what we got going. We can move it to council. And if you don't get your answer, I'll support moving it back to committee from council. But I don't want this to fail on a motion to council. And then we gotta wait thirty days. So I'm talking to you as the logical mindset. I can do special affairs. I can do that. All right. Um, but we done separated. So I'll make a motion to move one nine zero three nine three to special affairs.
There's a motion on the floor to move one nine zero three nine three to special affairs, Mr. President? They moved this second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Next one?
Um, Madam Chair, I would move move one nine zero three nine four to special affairs.
There's a motion to move one nine zero three nine four to special affairs, Mr. Garrett? It's been moved to second it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose. Next one?
Uh, Madam Chair, I would move one nine zero three nine five.
One nine zero three nine five to special affairs. Is there a second? Mr. Garrett? It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose. Next one?
That second one that moved to special affairs for the record was sixty seven twenty two Fleming Road. Madam Chair, I would move one nine zero three nine six eight fourteen West Hopson to special affairs.
One nine zero three nine six, Mr. Briggs. It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose. Mr. Mace?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would move one nine zero three nine seven to special affairs. Nineteen oh one Laurel Oak.
One nine zero three nine seven, is there a second? Mr. Garrett? It's been moved to second it. Is there any discussion? Mr. Mc- Mr. Briggs?
Uh, a constituent called me about this nineteen oh one Laurel Drive. And he lives in that same complex. And he was worried about whoever buys that. It's gonna cost him a lot of money because the roof is about to cave in. And and that's my only concern with this. That it's not livable. Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs, Mr. Mace.
Mr. Briggs, let me give you some information about nineteen oh one Laurel Oak. The gentleman on the, if you facing it, the gentleman on the right side, him and his wife, they put a new roof on this. And they had to do some work, an extra fifteen hundred dollars on the roof on the one on ours. They've asked me to try to recoup that. But this council ain't even got to that business. The guy on, and I say he ain't got the option to buy it. He wants to buy it. So I know people on both sides. Didn't know him till we got it, didn't matter. He wanna buy it. It ain't available for him. You go in there, it's livable and looking good. The land bank put ten thousand dollars into that property and was mad when we took it. Because they had put ten thousand dollars prematurely. So whoever giving you that information, have you ever been in there? I'll take you by there and you'll see how livable. I'll take you in there and meet the lady. It's livable. I'll trade it for mine. Maybe I could be an aid ward and be the council person. I'd rather live in that condo than my house. My house is a little more raggedy than that condo. So somebody done gave Councilman Briggs the wrong information. Now, I'm not gonna go over and say that no work need to be done on the roof, but it was some work done. The guy got the receipts, he want fifteen hundred back. I thought he had a legitimate on to buy it. And I hope that ain't who you hearing from. But I'm here to tell you, some of that information you said is wrong. I'm not saying all of it. But I don't know of the roof problem.
I remember that roof fifteen hundred.
And I know ten thousand dollars is what the land bank told me they put in it. And I done been in it. And I done been in the one. I said, I didn't even know they was this big and nice. They don't look that big. So, Mr. Briggs, I'm telling you and everybody else. And meet these people between now and special affairs. If I can assist you, let me know.
I'm aware of the fifteen hundred.
Uh, yeah, to Mr. Briggs, I just want people to be able to talk.
Are you done, Mr. Mace?
I'm never done.
I remember the fifteen hundred more than a year ago, because it was affecting his next door neighbor on the right. And, uh, I agreed, I thought he should recoup it. That means that it could be considered a gift of nine thousand in this case. So whoever buys that could be responsible for taxes or, uh, on nine thousand dollars.
So, any further discussion?
Madam Chair, Mr. Briggs, wouldn't they have already been responsible for that? If you saying gift type of thing, but at the time, it was owned by the land bank. And so if the land bank owned it and repaired it before we took it, owned by the land bank at the time. And so those gifts would have been responsible in that instance, not to that person. The land bank fixed up some property that it had. And then we took it. So I hear what you're saying, but I'm saying, I don't know all of what you know. All I know is what I know. And so I received the information. If people can find out between now and special affairs and if it's postponed back to committee from special affairs. I don't care if that process of postponing back happens, I can assure you, that policy, don't refer to just seven properties. And I can assure you, each one of these that I tell you had a land contract on it with a price certain. I can prove it. And so if I say it had one, now Fleming Road didn't. But Home Street, Laurel Oak and, I'll tell you which one, Hamilton did. I'll be voting to move this to special affairs.
Thank you. And just for the record, Laurel Oak was the only one that was a lease and not a land contract. It was a lease for eight hundred and fifty dollars a month. So the the person was not buying, they were leasing. Which would make sense for the land bank to include putting money in because they were going to still own the property. And I have the documentation inside of my office. It was the only one that is a lease. Mr. Mace, I have the floor. You have exhausted your two times. I'm asking you not to interrupt me. And so I too received a call from a person on one side, but not saying that the person didn't want to buy the house. And that they were interested in buying the house, that there was a leak in the house, their door, somebody is aware of that. But just for the record, this was the only one that was a lease and the lease was for eight hundred and fifty dollars a month. What's your point of information, Mr. Mace?
You saying that somebody told you the lady who lived there say she didn't wanna buy it?
Yes, the person next door.
No, I I'm talking about her.
No, I didn't say that. Mr. Mace, I didn't say that.
Told me she wanted.
Thank you, miss. Well, I wouldn't say it. She was paying eight fifty, I would buy it. Mr. Mace, thank you.
Point of information. I just wanted to know if she told.
I didn't say she said that.
You didn't. Why bring it up?
Those that oppose, any extensions? So, is there a last one?
Madam Chair, this the last one on this agenda. It's sixteen or seventeen, uh, but we baby stepping y'all. So this the last one on this agenda. This is not the last property. I don't want people to get that confused. I would move one nine zero three nine eight seventeen thirty six West Hopson to special affairs.
Zero three nine eight to council, Mr. Briggs.
Record to reflect that I want to transfer these properties back within thirty to sixty days in this pilot program. And the pilot program first was to prove that we could take them and intercept. That was the main proof. We done that. And then the second proof President Winfrey was to get them out of our hands quickly to avoid liability. Remember, we put five thousand dollars worth insurance on our eighty thousand. So I believe when you got people blocking, like Ms. Phil, Ms. Garrett, people coming up with stuff and they blocking. They trying to make something happen so they can say, see, now it's been a lawsuit. And guess who I'm gonna blame? The no voters, the blockers who wanna make this like it's a real real estate program. And we gotta get appraisals and appraise these to know the true market value. We ain't gotta do all that. You go pull in the assessment office to assess value and it's, you can double that and that's been for years how people come up with what might be the market value. So I want to pause here for the record to say on the record. If anybody catches any liability, blame the Galloways and the, um, Kate Fields and the Worthing's for blocking these transfers back. Because that was the idea at the beginning. To get them and transfer them, not to hold them and argue and create liability on the city. And so sometime when people wanna program to fail, they'll block it. And hope something happens wrong so they can say, see, we never should have got it. No, see, y'all never should have held this up no longer than that. And these deeds should be back in the residents' hands. And these deeds should be back in the residents' hands and it should be transferred. They should be off the hook with the land bank on illegal land contract and you right, one lease for eight hundred, Mr. Briggs. That lady was gonna be paying eight hundred, eight hundred, eight hundred, eight hundred. I'm like, do you want it? We gonna give it back to you because that's our policy, the right of first refusal. And so I don't care how it worked, Ms, Mr. Winfrey, can I give you a quick example? At the beginning of this meeting, you said you and Miss Galloway met with the auditor people. That's how we work. When I'm assigned a project and create a project, I didn't question what the auditors told y'all like that. But when it come to me, I'm discriminated again. No, we don't wanna ask you questions, we wanna ask the administration, we wanna ask legal. Just ignore the council person who worked on it, who, who, who pioneered it. But then when they meet on a project, Miss Galloway and you with the auditor, auditor, talking proper. And the auditor said, and the auditor. When do we discriminate on which projects get assigned? If, Mr. Davis, if you wanna take an initiative on a project. Whether it's housing, whether it's streets, whether it's black, that's your project. The problem we got here with Miss Galloway first, in particular. She want authority and wanna work on stuff and then come in here, I'm giving reports, but when it come to me. Beg your pardon, Miss Galloway. I'm giving you your second one. And I'm gonna ask if I have to warn you a third time, you remove yourself. That's fair, cause that's what you do with me. But you don't like it when folk talk bad about you, but you like it when Miss Fields talk bad about me, cause you don't check it, it go over your head. Cause you want her vote. You want her vote for something? And Mr. Briggs won't, I mean Garrett won't. That's the only way you can get what you want. You got to cater to them folks politically to put together five votes. Cause some of us ain't buy it. Object for a year or two or three, give me the respect, the respect to answer questions, I can answer questions to that Miss Attorney Reed ain't worked on. So I see your style. And I'm telling people how you is. You disrespectful to this Black North End Council. And it's a different treatment and you treat me differently, you discriminate. And I'm telling you, you're losing. Thank you for your undivided attention, cause you acting that way because I heard you mumbling under your breath to Mr. Davis. Maybe you working on his vote too. Let me say this in closing. I done, and I done got rid of people. And if you keep on, I'll be getting rid of you. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor of moving this to special affairs, say aye. Those that oppose, any extensions? It passes. Next on our, Mr. President. There's a motion on the floor to move one nine zero four five three to council, is there a second? Mr. Garrett. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, any extensions? It passes. Mr. Garrett. There's a motion on the floor to move one nine zero four five four to council, is there a second? Mr. Briggs is second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays.
Now, what is, it's a transfer of funds from what, um, through you to Steve, to the water and sewer fund?
It's from the water and sewer fund, it's just transferring to a, um, wages account in Fringes.
To a what account? Wages account? How much is being transferred? Ninety thousand or what's the total? A hundred and sixty-six total? Beg your pardon, Mr. Williams. That's the total amount. Oh, we got the finance, Her Majesty. Ms. Lewis. Can you join us for a second? Take the big chair, take the big chair. You know, I'm gonna keep them out for you, I'm the only one, only one treats you bad. If anybody else treats you bad, I'm coming out like a goat. Let me say this, I ask you this. How is the water fund if it relates to the seven million dollar payment? I don't wanna move money, I'm making it relevant even at a hundred and sixty-six thousand in order to make sure. Cause if we miss a seven million dollar payment, just some people take over our water fund. How are we looking on that? We ain't cutting the spend if need be. Should we pay one in advance?
Absolutely not.
But we got it. Let our bank hold the money. And interest. So I'll be voting to move this as long as I know we ain't moving and doing money out the water fund. That could put us in jeopardy of losing control over our revenues and receipts. Cause you know, I'm the finance chair, I have to look at finance. And I had to fight to get the emergency managers out. See, there was some council people here, and I can name them, that left them and others had to fight. As financial people to get the emergency manager out. And I'm gonna make sure people know that. What you do when you hold a position is important. Now, I done had to change a lot of ordinances. That the emergency manager left, but I don't think. Anybody can say who done amended or changed or introduced more ordinances than any council person in the nation. But I showed it a lot of. That folks left here messed up with emergency management. Go ahead, I'm telling you, I, I think people know what I'm saying.
No, I just wanted to note that if you look on the staff review that came from the DPW department. Um, there's a hundred and sixty-six thousand that's coming from the five ninety-one. And there's a hundred and sixty-six thousand coming from the five ninety-one, so the water and sewer fund.
And I have to admit, I didn't look at the staff review, cause I'm here now and it's faster. Listening to you, I believe you. I don't believe people who say they did more ordinances than any council people, cause there were probably some way back, you know. Who had to do ordinances. And had to do many of them, cause they were setting up the city. I seen a couple ordinances, but I done did a lot. There's some people left the, um, leak adjustment ordinance messed up. Some of them were sitting here with me, they gone, have we fixed that? Some of them had left the. May, I mean the shell on transferring property taxes over, um, for, I had to fix that. We steady fixing what some council people had left messed up. And guess who was the finance? We ran emergency managers out. It was some council people brought them in. That's why it behooves me, while any council person can support folks who brings in emergency managers. And then fight against council persons who act in a financial capacity to get them out. Thank you, Her Majesty.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, I would like to know what was, oh, I'm sorry, did anyone else have any questions? Okay, so, um, before, for, for council, our positions are funding. Because the, this money is being transferred for tho, from those funds to fund some positions, is that correct? I would like to know what positions those are, do we have somebody that's fielding them, I'm sorry? I know what they are, Steve, I know what they are. But those positions were originally according to the budget and when we were going through, any position that was not filled. It was taken away.
Point of information.
What's your point of information?
Didn't you say you first didn't know what they was?
And the reason why is before we get into it.
Point of information.
What is your point of information?
Do they go through personnel to be hired? We don't know the people yet.
Right, but, but where, why do we all of a sudden have positions open?
It's been positions we had to fund to get up to speed, we under.
Mr. Mays, Mr. Mays, absolutely, you know what, these are my questions, not yours. You know what, Mr. Mays?
You don't know this?
You're an anti, you're an antagonist and I can ask. You really are. And so, my ques, and the reason why I'm gonna ask this question is because I want to, to have a discussion. To find out Rob Bensick, um, Suzanne Wilcox. And, and I think there's one more other person that has a clause in their contract as an appointed position. That if their appointment is not still there, there's the opportunity to go down to a different, their old position. And so, and so, I, as, as much as my colleagues are okay, what is your point of information?
So really, you don't wanna know what position, you just wanna know if people who you might not agree with. Or hold positions in the administration and being funded to another, that's really what you have.
No, my question is, why, why, this is a legitimate question, Mr. Mays, not for you but for me. We're getting ready to move three hundred thousand dollars, is that right, you're saying three hundred and almost twenty thousand, right? It's appropriate for me because these are two positions that add up to a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars each. And so, it's appropriate to find out. Who, wh, why are we getting those two positions? Because we have, um, contracts in place, what are they called? Steve, I want you to stop, um, Steve.
These are positions that we required to, on an administrative order from EPA to have a water distribution supervisor in spot.
I'm clear about that, Steve, we haven't had one. And so my question is, we are paying on a contract for certain positions to be maintained by an outside source. And so, Steve, go ahead.
I'm gonna clarify.
Okay, please.
We're paying on a contract for F and D to run water treatment plant.
Correct.
Check the contract, it has nothing to do with the water distribution.
Is it, why is it pertinent now? That, that order hasn't been new, is it new? Maybe it's new, how old is it?
It's two thousand sixteen.
Okay, so we're in two thou, what is your point of information?
Well, there's all the news, didn't we feel the mandate?
It was two thousand and sixteen, my question is appropriate, Mr. Mays. When your turn comes, you can ask. If I'm going to vote on three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I need to know, why is it that this is coming before us? This is the last council meeting before an election. I'm not with anybody. I do, but I haven't said anything.
As much as y'all just said, you didn't do that, man. You said he couldn't talk about the election.
You guys have talked about the election for the last three months, I haven't talked about.
Talking to talk about the election.
You guys are so sad. And so, Mr. 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 Branch, I would like to have more information, I wanna know. And it's appropriate, if we have had to feel this since two thousand and sixteen, why are we seeking to try and feel it all of a sudden now? Do we have some candidates that we are already interviewing or what? And so that's an appropriate question. And so, I would, I would ask, that's a referral for, um, to have for the council meeting, so that I can make the decision for myself.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mays.
Madam Chair, now I want everybody to understand this, we under mandates to do stuff for a while. She done damn near threw Mr. Davis out of the meeting for talking about an election. And now the record to show she talking about an election when we in a finance committee meeting talking about. Why are we filling these mandated positions by court order? Why are we doing it and we in an election? I'm here to tell you, elections don't stop the city business. And, and why would you elect? You don't want the mayor to fix the water? You wanna hold up to fix another water for your politics? And you gonna sit in an elected seat and say, I ain't involved in it. I say you gonna vote. We might not be in the booth with you, but you gonna vote. And it sound like, from what I heard, you with the other candidate. Because now you saying you don't wanna approve three hundred thousand, cause it's close to an election. You want people to die off of water.
You cannot talk about elections, city bill.
Woodson and, 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 and Galloway team up on me to try to help Neely in no election. I'm gonna do them just like I did Dame Warwick, I'm gonna do them just like I did Scott Kincaid. They can run, they can leave, and we do whatever we want, but I be dumped on if that word slip. I don't wanna approve three hundred thousand for water, cause we in an election. I want people to die because we in an election, let her go. She letting the cat out the bag. Woodson talking election, she talking election. People at the City of Flint, I'm not gonna let them hijack the city. Talking about, I don't wanna vote for fixing the water plant, cause we this close to an election. Oh, oh, is, um, is, is Mr. Woodson now directing you where to sit, how to go? Is he y'all new campaign manager? That should be a kiss of death. When you see Woodson can come in a meeting, tell her not to leave sit there. I want everybody to, me did Scott Kincaid, we should have an easy win. We should have an easy win. When you see Woodson directing Galloway, Woodson coming to shy low with, we should have an easy win. I, I wanted to go viral, the cat is out the bag.
Mr. President.
The cat is out the bag.
Mr. Mays. Mr. President. It is what it is. When in wrong, do us the wrong. Thank you.
The cat is out there, she don't wanna vote for water because of an election. They're trying to throw you out, they're trying to throw me out, no wonder she wanna throw me out for talking. No wonder they trying to discredit me, cause people know how I roll. Ah, did you catch it? The cat is out the bag. Woodson running Galloway, Woodson running an election.
I'm good.
We should have an easy win here.
It's gonna be fun, y'all.
Is it Halloween yet?
It's gonna be real fun. They love me, they scared of me. Say my name, say my name.
You should have seen, would you be here to see that, Mr. Woodson? Ah, Galloway and Woodson said, election. I don't wanna pay for the water, feel the, that's an election. Ain't that, they trying to kill people versus take care of business. Talking about, don't do it, it's too close to the.
That's how he talk. Pretty next week.
Don't let these people play with your life. Listen, my Mays gonna tell you the truth. But I seen with Woodson and y'all, they trying to block fixing the water district. The cat is out the bag. What's their strategy, trying to keep Flint messed up?
You know the sad part about all this? Don't nobody know what they talking about around here? You see what I'm saying? Nobody. Don't nobody, don't nobody know what they talking about? You see what I'm saying? Mays, for one. Y'all let him keep on going on and, uh, uh, Maurice Davis allowed to keep going. He seconding nonsense. That's why I had to do a recall. So, hey, second ward, y'all, y'all get ready. I said, second ward, get ready. We got recall, we got a recall coming up in May. Hey, it's all good, it's all good. We got a recall, second ward, second ward, get ready, no more rubber stamps on city council. Hey, y'all, hey, we gonna have him playing good tires on Sunday, because he will not be up in here on Mondays. You know what I'm saying? He will not be up here on Mondays. See, look, hey, look. See, I don't take it personal, but see, the thing is. Hey, November the fifth, Mayor Weaver gone, May the fifth, Davis gone. Davis gone after Mayor Weaver gone. Hey, 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 no more rubber stamps, y'all. Hey, no more, no more rubber stamps. Hey, 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 no more, no more. Hey, hey, no more rubber stamps, y'all. Hey, look, look, why is he still, see, if I was a councilman, I would have been and walked out by now. If I was a councilman, I would have been and walked out by now. Professionalism, professionalism. Hey, y'all, we gonna be in the second ward cleaning up, because we don't have a councilman. All we got is a rubber stamp on city council for Mayor Weaver. My fault, I, I stayed quiet, you know I stayed quiet. I stayed quiet, so I had to say something about my recall. Hey, 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 hey.
I promise you, if he call me out on Facebook, it's over. I'm telling you. I'm talking about the ones, these men that be calling women out on Facebook and disrespect them on Facebook.
Look at Neely Capo from here trying to intimidate somebody.
Hey, 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 it ain't nothing about intimidating, it ain't nothing about intimidating. Hey, 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 y'all, hey, hey, look, y'all, look. Hey, look, y'all, see, I'm profession, hey, hey, look. Hey, look, y'all, see, I'm profession, hey, hey, look.
I ain't none of your clown, I reject.
Hey, hey. See what I'm saying? See, hey. Hey, look. Hey, see, see a professional, a professional, a professional councilman would have walked out a long time ago. Was on, let him walk away. Hey, hey, a professional, a professional, hey, a professional councilman would have been walked away. See what I'm saying? Hey, y'all, hey, second ward, we voting him out. Oh, hey, you think I'm afraid? Do you think I'm afraid? Do, do you think I'm afraid? Hey, look, hey, y'all, hey, hey, do he honestly believe I'm gonna be afraid? It wouldn't be the first time that the policing came. Go man, hey, go, hey, oh, the police gonna handle you. Man, I don't give a, man, I almost cussed, almost cussed, y'all. Almost cussed. Hey, look, fake, hey, 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 fake, fake ass, fake ass, fake ass booty beads on his, on his goddamn ponytail. Hey, look, got anal beads on his ponytail and shit. Get the fuck on with that, got me fucked up, for real. Hey, 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 y'all, hey, look. Hey, little fake ass damn city councilman, he gonna be going back to play his goddamn good time. He gonna be off city council, I got a recall on that ass.
Y'all fake nobody. Mister Nobody.
Hey, 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 y'all, hey, look, look, y'all, he will be getting voted down. Hey, hey, look, y'all. Fake councilman, look at the fake councilman, look at the fake councilman.
Look at that.
Look at the fake councilman, y'all, look, fake councilman.
Fake recall.
Fake councilman, it's real, it's real, it's real, look, y'all, fake councilman, look at this, look at this. Fake, look at the anal beads, look at the anal beads on the ponytail, come on, y'all. Fake, fake anal beads. Wow, 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 wow. Now, hey, hey, when you leave in May, when you leave in May, go file the charges.
Don't follow behind.
Go file the charges.
Don't walk up on me.
Go file the charges.
Don't walk up on me.
File the charges.
You ain't gonna be lap, don't walk up.
Go file the charges, you know what I'm saying? File the charges. File the charges, you gonna file the charges? Huh?
You're fired now.
You gonna file the charges, you want me to come down and help you sign the sheet? You want, hey, you want me to help you sign the sheets? Uh, hey, look at the fake ass councilman, y'all, look at the fake ass councilman. Fake ass.